Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, July 12, 2022. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes of reports received and filed?
Yes, we have the auditor's June 2022 revenue expenditure report, and we have the treasurer's June 2022 reconciliation report.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
I've got Home Builder Association Board meeting this afternoon, Planning Commission meeting tonight, Saltways Management District Board meeting tomorrow. Uh, looks like there's Chiefs meeting Thursday night. So... And I've got a meeting about Molester Drive Friday morning. I think that's it. Well, there is a deal Monday as well for public health, public health conversation.
Oh, with the Department of Public Safety and Services, yes.
Yeah, I might not have it titled correctly, so...
You left, left off St. Stanislaus Parish Picnic Sunday.
I wasn't done yet.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay.
And St. Stanislaus Parish Picnic Sunday. Yeah, I do have that on the, it's not on this calendar.
You usually work that.
Yeah, I'll be out there. I'm not gonna tell you where, 'cause if I tell you I'm parking carts, they'll try to hit me.
Just back over here.
I'll watch for your vet. I think that's it.
I think tomorrow I have a Salute 22 meeting, and then maybe Thursday is Salute 22 wrap-up. Is that correct? Um, Thursday of Public Works meeting. And Thursday evening is the Samaritan Center fundraiser, the first time in three years, I think. And they still call it annual, even though they've skipped two years, but because of COVID. That's my calendar.
Yeah. You guys got me all covered, too. I don't have that much this week. Okay, presentation from staff and invited guests, United Way Campaign kickoff.
So we're pretty excited that it's the start of the 2022 United Way Campaign. Um, Cole County is, once again, a pace setter organization, so our campaign starts today. Employees will be getting pledge cards in their mailboxes, and then we are having an event on July 22 at the airport. And all the information is on, on the Cole County Health Department's Facebook page. But there's gonna be a lot of prizes, and food trucks, and a cornhole tournament. So if Ann wants to say a few words about the United Way Campaign, like the theme or anything, you have to come up to the microphone.
Thanks, Kristi. Hi, everybody. I just wanna say thank you all for letting me be here today and for, once again, supporting the United Way as a pace setter. I wanna thank Kristi's team for leading the charge. It's a lot of work to, to have a successful campaign, but when you have an energetic group behind it, I know you guys are gonna do great, as you always do. Our theme this year is Willy Wonka, so we always have a fun theme, the purple shirts, thus, the Willy Wonka theme. But more importantly, our slogan is "So shines a good deed in a weary world." I think, you know, over the last three years, well, there's been a lot going on, and everyone is a little bit weary, but, um, you know, our community always comes through for the United Way and for all of the good things that are going on in this community. And again, the county is certainly behind so much of that. We got to work so closely during the pandemic and the tornado before that. So proud of the work you all do, and thank you for supporting our community in this way, because there's a lot of vulnerable people out there that, um, you know, over the last three years have been impacted even more. And so last year, with your help, we were able to help about 120,000 people. And I know this year those numbers are gonna be very consistent, so many people need our help, and so anything you can do is so, so appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody come out and play cornhole on the...
22nd.
22nd. Joe?
Why aren't we not having 50/50 on there? So I emailed, trying to figure that out. I'd never got an answer about why we took the 50/50 off there.
It's not legal.
What's not legal?
I just know that, that...
Well, so I had to tell them to take it off there, and I'm trying to find out why, because you have 50/50s all the time. It's a drawing. It's a charitable event. This is a United Way event, so you're saying the United Way cannot have 50/50s?
The United Way is a 501(c)(3). We're not.
That's who's having the drawing.
I thought we were sponsoring it.
Lots of people sponsor things for other charitable events, so why can't we do it?
We're not a 501(c)(3).
What's, nobody's gonna say anything about it. It's, the United Way is having the 50/50 drawing.
No, they're not.
Yeah, they are.
It's us. It's not them.
It's a United Way event being held by us, sponsored by us. Lots of people have events for other churches, schools, and things, and so you're not telling them...
Schools, churches are exempt. They're the same as a 501(c)(3). Read the law, Chris.
Chris?
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I'm just wondering who has to stick their nose in this stuff. It's not illegal. Who's gonna, who's gonna, you're gonna come in there and tell us we're gonna get prosecuted for having a drawing?
I'm not telling...
For 50/50 for United Way?
I didn't say that.
You're saying it's illegal, so apparently you're saying we're all gonna get prosecuted for it.
I didn't say that.
That's what I heard. What'd you say? That's illegal?
I said we're not a 501(c)(3).
We don't have to be. It's a United Way event. They're the ones having it.
Well, let's discuss this later, 'cause we've got BKD on here, and we're paying him by the minute.
Why not be out in the open about it? We're gonna do it just like everything else via emails? It's okay to approve stuff via emails?
No.
So it should be talked about.
Yeah.
So same with the, um, you're giving a day off to people, so how many people does it take to approve that? Just you?
No.
Well, that's what it said. You approved the day off for people that are gonna make that contribution.
I...
So...
We'll discuss that, too.
Well, that should've been discussed before you went through the emails and got it approved for part of the sponsorship. Yeah, this email says it right here. Thanks to Sam for approving the half-day off and the extra day off as a gift for people who are gonna be in a drawing for their contributions. So that was the first I'd heard of it.
Well, that last week was kind of a bad week. I was kind of...
I have bad weeks a long time.
So we can discuss, we can discuss.
We still gotta do stuff the right way.
Yeah, but we need to get on with BKD.
This is still part of the same stuff here. It's a legitimate question.
Yes, it is.
So...
And we will, we will discuss it after, before the fundraiser.
You're gonna kick it down the road later on?
No, no. We just gotta keep moving ahead and get BKD...
Why not solve it now? Answer it. I just asked for some answers to these questions. There's a lot of 50/50 drawings. So somebody's sticking their nose in where they didn't need to. We had everything lined up, and you wrote stuff, so, all right. Go ahead. I sent my piece.
Okay. Okay, let's do BKD.
Okay. Well, I'll just start off. You know, last Friday was the close of the applications that have been on the website for about a month. So far, we had 56 applicants. We had some trouble with the application itself, back and forth with some vendors. We think we've solved all their questions, and again, we closed it last Friday at 4:30. You have a list, or I emailed you a list of all the people that did apply. We haven't really checked those out thoroughly, by no means yet. Here is a copy of them. Some of the attachments that they did were...
Thank you.
Hundreds of pages long, so I did not print all of those copies, but I do have floppy for people that want it, since we're bringing this to an open meeting. Again, I'd ask you guys just to look over the list, and I got Teresa online here if you have any questions. And now's the time to think about how you're gonna proceed with this, as far as that goes. And we're here to answer any questions.
So do we wanna reconvene our advisory committee, or whether we wanna do?
I don't wish to put this back on the advisory committee. I think it's time for us. What I'd suggest is each of us take the schedule that's been prepared by our finance department and do a first pass at it individually. Maybe ranking, or striking, or changing the number that's been requested. I've got my own philosophy about what's most deserving. It's, um... There are different features that I'd say help rank them for me. If it's a, if it's an application, um, where there's some match involved is important to me. If it is for some kind of a long-term improvement, or structure, or whatever, something that's gonna last some period of time. This is a one-shot thing, so it shouldn't be expended and, and gone in a couple of years. The taxpayers that are gonna ultimately pay for this giant expenditure, in some cases, haven't been born yet, so it'd be nice if, when they do pay the tax or retire the debt, that they're gonna get some benefit out of it. Also, I like to consider the economic impact of it, that, that there might be some generation of some other revenue as a result of it. But I'm just kind of rambling now, but I think each of us have our own theories as to what, what's best for the community. And I've made a first pass. I'm not ready to share it with anybody yet, but I'd suggest that each of us make our own first pass, and then we funnel that to maybe the finance department, that they can list them and build a schedule, and we move on from there.
So when you do that, do you number them, one through the...
I, I didn't rank them. I, what I did is, is really kind of line some off.
Because I agree with the idea, the concept of it.
Uh, we've got, how many are on the list, just total?
There's 56.
There's 56 on the list. I, I think, um, we could line some of them off. I did. Maybe you will, too. And if, if all three of us happen to line the same one off, we, there's no need to ask our consultants if they qualify, if that's really where that money should go. We just don't need to run up their hours if it's not necessary.
Okay. I'm gonna do it through that.
We've got like $37, $39 million in requests, so we don't have, we, we don't even have half that money, so it's, it's, uh...
And then you can also think of that budget amount that you were talking about. You know, we have the $10 million of government services that we can use, and another $5 million anywhere else. That's what the other sheet was, was basically the budget, basically what you guys have already approved out of that money, and kind of in what category. So that may help you with your list, too, as far as what dollar amount threshold you're thinking of.
Yeah.
Because of that $10 million number, that's really very flexible, I don't think we're really gonna run into the limitation there. Where I kind of get concerned is on some of these long-term contracts, will the building be up and finished and completed by 12:31, 26? We, uh, we have to encumber it by the end of '24 and spend it by the end of '26, I think.
That is right.
Yeah.
Unless they...
Teresa, have they changed that, as far as you've heard?
Couldn't hear her.
Sorry, Teresa, that's my bad.
That's okay. Uh, no, they, they haven't changed that rule. It needs to be completed by '26.
Okay.
So, and that will all help later, when you do narrow this down, so that we can take it to four of us, BKD, and find out if they do qualify.
So what about other things, like we had emailed from county clerk last week, of course, more about election equipment, which that wasn't in here, so...
I...
Throw that one out for now, and...
I, I, yeah, I think I would add it onto my list.
Okay.
I'm, I'm pretty favorable, favorable to keep the county requirements or requests in the first pass and not exclude those. And I, but the clerks did come in late, but a voting machine might make sense. And it wasn't, I mean, it was less than $100,000, wasn't it?
Internal, so we can do...
Yeah.
I mean, if we've got our internal money, basically, we can do a one, two of that.
Right.
The ones in the yellow highlight are inside the county request, as far as the spreadsheet goes. So if you want to forward that, you can add this to the list.
Okay.
Okay.
Around 86 or 95 plus. I think there was some RT stuff and licensing that we can look at. I'll send you that email then.
Of course, you know, I'm not sure if all of those would actually qualify for that dollar amount that they're requesting to, for some departments. And I guess the city did have a list in the paper Sunday, so that's out there, as far as that goes, too. Teresa, do you have any words of wisdom on how other entities are handling this, or...
No, I think, um, just making a, a criteria for yourself while you guys are going through it, of what do you think it's important to fund, and kind of using that as a backbone to make your decision on which entity you want to fund, and which projects you want to fund, so that you're kind of across the board, giving everybody a fair shot at getting this funding, so...
Do you guys have any other questions, or you want me to schedule a meeting for a couple weeks out, or a week out, or...
I, I think, um, if we could commit to sending something to you this week, by the end of the week, our first pass, and that's just what we're gonna call it, the first, the first pass, to see if we can eliminate some of, uh, if we're unanimous on something, I think we might be able to...
Start digging into that.
Uh, reduce the 37... 37 million down to some more reasonable number.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll look forward to receiving that from you guys, and then we'll go from there, as far as that goes.
Okay.
Teresa, I will let you go for now. See ya.
And while we're talking ARPA, then Mayor Turgeon would like a couple minutes just to...
Thank you, Commissioner Bushman, and appreciate the opportunity to, to talk about ARPA. And I know that when you talked about other entities and how they're doing that, we look forward to working with the county. And while we have different processes, and you all had an application process, ours was having people come to the council meeting. So now that you all are complete with your applications, there are some that may overlap. Now that yours are in, we'd be happy to work together and see if any of us have some similar requests and how we can partner together. Maybe there's projects we can work together on. The city has put in some applications as well. But we just look forward to working together and partnering. It's funny, about a year ago, we got together before even the final recommendations of how the money could be used, but talked about, you know, let's, let's work together. So now that we're at the point where applications are in, just let us know. We'd be happy to either come to a meeting or share the list so that we can make sure that you have all the information that you may need from us and how we can work together, 'cause it's a wonderful opportunity to make some really important projects happen in our communities, within the city, within the county. So we're just here simply to say we're happy to help and work together, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Bids and contracts. Renewal one of 2021-18 janitorial supplies.
Do you guys have the bid tab of it, or do you...
It's attached to your agenda.
You have it? Okay. This will be the first renewal with Hilliard for the janitorial supplies. As you can see by the bid tab, almost all the items did increase. The total, total increase for the supplies was about $94. Um, I spoke with Greg regarding this, and he's pleased with their products and is okay with their services and okay with the increase. His recommendation is to renew the contract with Hilliard for another year. So today, I'm just needing approval to renew it and then sign the contract.
I'm, at $94 is, is, that's, that's, in these times, that's really inexpensive.
A motion to renew the contract for janitorial supplies, contract number 2021-18.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Amendment to 2020-29 Generator Maintenance Service Contract.
We are needing to add three generators to our generator maintenance contract. The three generators are located out at EMA. By adding these three generators, it's gonna be an additional $1,225 a year for our maintenance costs. Greg is okay with adding the generators and with the price increase, so today I'm just needing approval to sign the amendment.
So we do need to make sure that we take the ones that are part of the EMA and keep them separate, because we're supposed to, yeah, we're supposed to bill whatever we get, half through the grant, and then half of whatever's left over is split between the county and city.
Okay.
So we just need to keep track of that stuff, so I'll fine with it.
Motion to amend the contract between Cole County and Cummins, Inc., um, to add, is that correct?
Yes.
Add generators, as noted, to the contract for maintenance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna table the approval and signing of SWC Soul Source. So we have signing of independent contract with the Pringer Family Center.
Good morning. We've had a supervised visitation exchange program at Pringer Center since 2009. This is the contract for the lady who supervises the visits. This is a flow-through. We have a grant through OSC that, that reimburses for all of this money.
Okay.
You like those?
Motion to sign the independent contract with...
Sherri Colton.
Sherri, what's her last name? Colton?
Golden.
Golden. Sherri Golden.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion approval of continuation of RJ Shear and Associates agreement.
Basically, I just put this back on the agenda, because the contract was giving you a, a grace period of six months to make sure that this is what you want to do. I just need permission to go ahead and pay for July for that service going forward, until I hear anything different from you guys.
This is the second year.
This is actually the, the first full year.
Yeah.
First full year.
We're signing it.
You've already signed it, and when you signed it, it had a clause in there that you would review it after the first six months and make sure that you wanted to continue.
And for the renewal, if it's not an actual renewal, is this going to consent to it?
Yes.
I think they've done a good jobs.
I'm very satisfied with Randy and Brian's work during the session, and they really, they really kept me and, well, all of us and Jill in the loop on legislation that would affect the county.
Kristi was able to get some good changes made.
Yep.
So if you would just approve the continuation of the agreement?
I'll make a motion to continue the agreement with, um...
RJ Shear.
RJ Shear and Associates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unfinished business. Mosquito spraying discussion.
So I think there's been some, you know, discussion via email. Eric provided some very good points. I think we're just coming back to you. Technically, well, and by the policy, you know, it's, it's low risk, and we've had complaints, and we don't have, like, a current infection of Westona virus, but, you know, that is at the commission's discretion if you want to provide the spraying. I know we have done it in the past. Now, there's concerns about, um, kind of starting something and not knowing what kind of complaints we get. I think from the Health Department perspective, you know, we want to provide the service when it is appropriate for the citizens, since we have the policy. I guess we would just ask that if it's the commission's decision not to provide spraying, that we go ahead and rescind the policy, because right now there's this expectation that it's gonna be done. We're gonna provide the service to be protected of public health. So if you'd like to hear your feedback on basically what Eric had said, and then the policy.
I like the idea of you doing it through parks, then, and, uh, you know, it, yeah, we haven't had any requests for quite a while to fog, and I don't think the city's fogging any, you know, anymore.
That's because we've had the policy in place. So if we're gonna do this, then we need to rescind the policy. If we're not gonna follow our own policy, then we won't have it. And we've had complaints about it being a nuisance, but not about it being a risk of, we haven't had any disease or anything that's been founded by it. So it's just been a nuisance. I mean, and they can look at a lot of the things, too. I mean, if you wanna, they can spray themselves. They can get outside people to do that. You need to talk to the conservation and, uh, build bat houses. We've got bats around the house, too. We don't have mosquitoes, ever. I mean, there's a lot of different ways of doing it. I was, I don't think there's a lot of taxpayers' money, want their, taxpayers that want their money going to fog in certain areas.
Well, I disagree on that. If, to me, if the, if our citizens ask to do something, um, I, I think we need to, to listen to them, and, uh, so...
Gonna have some people have some nuisance skunks.
That's, well, this is...
Nuisance spiders and nuisance ticks, so where are you gonna draw the line at? We have a policy. We should follow it. So...
Eric, excuse me. I didn't mean to cut you off. The logistics of making it happen have, has been worked out, and, I mean, a plan.
We have one, we have one unit, fogging unit, that's operational. We'll have to hook it up to the truck and everything. We can do that. The only thing I ask is this be not part of Road and Bridge 211 Fund that it come out of at, at this time, now that we have the Parks Fund, or the Parks Department funded. We take any expense out of that. We have the fogging material, whatever you wanna call it, to use to put into the machine. We have that, and we should have enough to get us by for a while. And it's still good to use, even though it's been around for a few years. So I think we're set up to do it. If the commission's directive is for us to do it, all I ask is that it come out of the Parks Fund and not out of Road and Bridge.
Okay.
And that would, it would be overtime hours. It has to be done either early morning or later in the evening. And if we have, we have one employee, one full-time Parks employee that is trained and licensed to do it. If somebody else has to do it in his place, we would ask that that be reimbursed out of general revenue back into Road and Bridge, so...
Could we not just have him come in at noon and work noon to eight?
Can't do it during those timeframes, Sam. It's, it's, and it's based on when the mosquitoes are moving and doing their thing. It has to be done more when it's cooler, and...
Well, that's why I'm saying if, if he would work, I'm just talking about overtime. If he would come in at noon and work till 8:00 PM, he, he can go out and spray at 7:00 in the evening.
He's also got three parks to mow, and we need, and he's got, he's got enough work right now to keep him busy without this.
Many of the general duties they still have to get done, so this is on top of everything, yes.
This would be extra, yeah.
You could do it, but then you're not gonna be able to get your other stuff.
How many times do we need to fog?
To hide us one time.
Yeah, it, it, to do, to do this specific location, you know, probably once or twice over the course of a week or two, just to kind of get, get some...
You might as well put Allstate City on there, too. It's gonna be coming.
I think it, what's, what is it gonna lead to? That would be, are we prepared to do this more, so...
We have not heard from Allstate.
We have. They've, they've requested it through us. We said that they had to come back here.
I've heard it before, every year, and we've always had the policy, it's until we have some kind of identified disease coming through there, and we actually have to address it. And that's, Kristi, don't kill me, but that's why it should come from the Health Department. I mean, why would it come from Parks? I mean, why would it come from Parks? That doesn't make any sense at all. So, I mean, y'all may be going to do the work, but just like when we have you do the work here on regular county building maintenance, that's not public works. That's not what that money comes in for. So we do reimburse from the other funding, so.
When the neighborhood asked for it, it was, I don't know if it was unanimous of all the neighbors, but it was, it was popular for, I mean, multiple residences asked for this. It wasn't like...
At the, at Hym Street, yes, absolutely. I went and talked to, and I was surprised, but yes, absolutely, neighbor by neighbor. I just happened to hit it at a time when several were coming home from work, and I just kept going down the road and asking neighbors, and it was, they all sang from the same sheet of music. It was all, this is the worst we've ever seen it. And, yeah, I'm not in favor of just arbitrarily going out and spraying when there's no, I mean, but in this instance, it appeared to me that they sounded very like there was an issue that we could help address.
And did you guys have a chance to look at the policy?
I have not.
So in the, in the low, the low category, it's complaints of fighting adult mosquitoes for a history of West Nile vector-borne disease in there or a current infection. And that's when spraying can be, you know, used, it can be used. So, and it needs, we need to have two of those met. So technically, we only have one of those met. And then, you know, if there's different, if there are mosquitoes and vector-borne diseases identified or an outbreak, you know, that would be kind of trigger an automatic response of spraying. But, you know, in this situation, that's why I brought it to you, because technically, we only have one of the criteria met, not two.
And two.
But because Joe had, you know, so many complaints, that's why I brought it to you.
So if we do it, we're violating the policy if we...
If you do it, you're not following the policy to the letter. But of course, you, as the commission, do have discretion to offer X bring at any time.
And I might add something. So I believe three years ago at Osage City, at a commission meeting, we had some discussion, and I think Larry at the time had said that we've got spray, we've got quite a few complaints. I wasn't getting that many. I went out there, and about half the people said, oh, yeah, they're bad. I mean, of course, Osage City, they expect mosquitoes out there. But anyway, he said they were going to go ahead and spray. That was three years ago. We did not have a West Nile, you know, disease at that time. I believe that they did go ahead and spray. They said they did. We absolutely, I know we did dunks. We threw out in water that was, that was standing water, we would throw some mosquito dunks out in those areas occasionally, you know, to try to limit and reduce the mosquitoes. So I believe it was done at that time. I'm not 100% sure because I wasn't there whenever it actually got sprayed, but Larry said they were going to hook it up and spray because they had extra spray that needed to be used anyway.
I don't remember for sure if we did or not. I remembered the dunks, but...
I will agree with Jeff on the budget side of it or the, or quote, who gets tagged with it. I think it belongs in health, but I think that's simply a journal entry. I mean, you'll do the work if we do it, but that budget gets hit with it. But we fix the budget to, so that's not, you don't have to cut somewhere else to make it happen. So, don't like to violate our own policy, but I would, I would, because of the concentration and the heavy please do it that you picked up by visiting the neighborhood, I'd vote, I'd vote to do it at this point in this case. And if another case comes in front of us, we'll look at that. But then we may have to readdress the policy that it, one of three can make it happen. But we're violating our own policy, I guess, at this point. We can always change the policy then. So I'll just put this out there that we, we honor the request of the Hym Street neighbors to, in this case, do the fogging.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
And I will second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You're trying to get us out of here early for some reason.
No, 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 no.
If anybody has, they need to come. Come back here.
So, yeah, if you get more complaints about mosquitoes or vector-borne disease, contact the Health Department because then we consult, can consult with the clinical disease nurses. Now, the data is not always real time, but we at least try to look at the area and see if there's a history of vector-borne diseases, if we're getting any calls now, and then we'll, we'll bring it back to you.
You going to start doing counts?
We keep track of everything.
Some of them are as big as turkeys out there, so not hard to count.
We're just going to start buying bags.
I'm telling you, that's what we need, more bags.
Okay. You know, before we even, we go to the purchase of mobile radios, our auditor has a new employee. Would you like to introduce? I meant to do that at the beginning.
Yes. Lisa Love is our new chief deputy auditor, starting yesterday, so.
Hi, Lisa.
We're both still learning. I'm still learning too, but we're, we're quick learners, so.
Just remember, everything's good for the sheriff's department. It's all you got to remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What's your favorite candy?
Do you like?
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to be dealing with a lot of our department heads, so. But anyway, welcome, and I think you'll like it here.
So far.
Okay, now we will go back to our agenda. Purchase of mobile radios for EMS capital.
Well, thank you to the auditor for buffering me from the mosquito discussion. So this is not an old business. As you might recall, a few weeks ago, we had a discussion about, or it was on the agenda to purchase some mobile radios out of our capital budget. This purchase off a co-op, and at that time, we were unable to obtain the actual contract, so it took us a little bit to get that. We've received that, Jill's reviewed it, and there is no problems with the, with the contract. So today, I'm asking for approval for purchase of three mobile dual-band radios out of our capital budget. Total price is $20,885.04. The, the thing with dual-band radios is really it gives us the next level of technology, moving us into the future, so we're replacing older technology by doing this. And really what it is, is it allows us to also, to have digital capabilities, but also have conventional radio capabilities. And where this really came into play is responding to the train incident. We were not only able to listen and talk to the folks who were working on the scene, but we were able to communicate through the digital radios back to our strike team coordinator who was here in Jeff City. So very important that we continue to make these radio upgrades. This is, as you will see, a part of the, we have additional ARPA requests in to replace future radios, but kind of two ways we can go about this. We can continue funding it little by little out of capital budget, or if we were to receive the ARPA money, that would help us further that process as well. So this was approved in our budget this year, so I'm just asking for approval of that today.
Do we have contract or...
Just a quote. It's a co-op quote.
Do we have to sign that or...
Nope, just a, a motion or, do we need a motion for...
Yeah, probably, probably, probably I'll just...
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion to purchase some mobile radios from EMS Capital as discussed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, before we go to new business, now we have another, our emergency management director has an intern, so if you'd want to introduce him, Nick, or... What's, what's his last name?
I didn't get his last name.
That's what I figured.
So in partnership with the city, Clayton, a student at Lincoln University, is finishing up an internship, and as we said, we are partnering with the city, so he's come to join me today and learn a little bit more about emergency management. And so I'm very sorry for being tardy this morning. Clayton, you want to say anything?
Don't really have anything to say. It's, I've still got the rest of this month to go, just kind of going around the old city and some of the county, so it's been pretty exciting so far.
So is he, how long is he with you?
Just for a couple hours today.
So is he going to help us at the fair?
He looks like he can do that.
You know, interesting enough, you're shadowing me on the week of the fair.
Oh, that's right. There you go.
It's going to work out good.
Yeah, it's going to be great.
Free work.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else we got any more guests? New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number Eight.
Okay, this is adjustment to budget for $5,035. This is the children's nutrition program out of the Pringer Family Center, so I do need action today to change the budget to very much forward.
Make motion to sign Budget Adjustment Number Eight for $5,035.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Refilling and resealing of county park parking lots.
So as discussed last year for budget and leading into this year, we're redoing all the parking lots of county facilities, at least the ones that need it. And part of that is a seal code on the Health Department and the courthouse annexed parking lots. We've got two quotes. It's with Precision Seal Coating Services and a couple different variations on the, the amounts. We went with or are going to recommend that we do it such that it be night work or weekends to avoid having to deal with parking issues. And then also, the quote would include re-stripping of the parking lots, so putting the parking, the stripes and all that back as they are, or if there's some tweaks to that, we can do that as well. So like I said, it's with Precision Seal, Seal Coating Services, and the amounts are for the courthouse annexed parking lot, it's $3,475. The Health Department is $6,640. We are utilizing some changes to the prevailing wage law in 2018 to allow us to forego the competitive bid requirements if it's under $10,000 for public works projects. So that's how we're doing this, and we still have to follow county policy that we don't go over, I believe it's $12,000 in a three-month period. So we still, that, that doesn't apply here, but it allows us to, to hire these contractors to do this work if it falls under those amounts. So that's, that's what that falls under. And we, when we do this, and we've used it two to three times a year since this went into effect, and we provide the information to the Finance Department and Auditor's Department pertaining to that, and I included that documentation at the end of the handout, so. Any questions about this?
I may have not paid attention earlier, not today, but some time earlier, with respect to Carnegie and back there, that, is that coming through on the Carnegie contract or what?
Okay, so this, this work falls under the sales tax county facility portion, the 15% portion. Carnegie is a separate project altogether.
All right.
Pre-bid for that's tomorrow. Actually, bid opens next week. This would be the, the parking lot behind here.
Right, okay. So we'll see, we'll see more asphalt at some later date around the backside of the Carnegie Building?
Yes.
And behind the old jail as well?
Yes, that's all bid in with the asphalt overlay contract that was approved a week or two ago, so, yeah.
All right, good.
It just looks like we're able to save some money there. That's good.
Bids came, came in less than what we expected, which is good.
It's a good day today, you know?
Yes, great day. I do have some quotes that we would, that I would ask that you would sign, just authorizing because it does come out of the county's courthouse portion or the county facility portion of the sales tax.
Okay.
So this will be under your purview.
I'm good with this, Jeff.
So you just need a motion for the, to sign the agreement with Precision Seal Coating Services for both proposals?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion to sign the agreement with Precision Seal Coating Services on those proposals.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We, we already, I think, had our discussion on the ARPA applications. Do we want to...
Nope, I think you are correct.
Okay, so we will finish with that. Budget transfer for Pringer Family Center.
I would ask for a budget transfer from the part-time line to that overtime line of $10,000. We have an auditor of about $15,000 of them right now. It's a transfer from part-time to overtime.
Let's just transfer that to cover the overtime. At this point, are we going to run short on both of them by the end of the year?
I'm hopeful not.
Okay, I knew you were short a person too right now, so I didn't know if that was going to cut into the overtime as well, but...
So that's on the court services side, and this is on the residential detention side, and we're actually now down two with a third one who has two child offers in court services, so I'll be in contact to discuss that. But as for detention and residential, we are full-time staff. We have one out on FNLA and one who may be out. I'd be impressed.
Just FYI, in May, we transferred the same direction, maybe $500, so that's why it's just back down.
Okay. So we're just going to sign the transfer then?
Yes.
Okay, we don't need a motion, or do you need a...
The budget documents say if you're moving in among payroll lines, that they have to come to the commission for approval. FYI.
Make a motion to approve the transfer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, K-9 maintenance training agreement.
This is a K-9 maintenance training agreement with Boone County Sheriff's Department on the training of our dog, Fang. It's $1,800. We pay $900 upfront, and then we pay $900 after 10 weeks of training. It's something that we've done before. Jill's already looked at and signed it and signed off on it. So we need you to vote on this. Sammy, you need to sign it, and you have to initial all four corners of each page, and then we're going to need a DNA sample afterwards.
Long as you don't need a urine sample.
Do you have any questions?
Could they also train the sheriff?
For some reason, they keep wanting me to put on the suit to get bit on the sheriff.
Something about old dogs, new tricks or something.
But they said I don't have to wear the pads. I don't know what that means, but...
We could maybe do that at our, at our carnival tournament. That would be, yeah.
There you go, yeah.
And let people, let people bring their dogs.
This is for you, and I'll buy the milk bone underwear for you, buddy. We're not going down that rabbit hole. Let's both get hurt by that.
Your answer to this question won't affect my vote, but how many of your staff can handle the dog?
Two.
Two?
That can, so for instance, we saw that the dog, of course, is very obedient for walking, but we have another one that can come in because if, if he goes down for some reason, the dog won't let us approach, so we have to have another person to be able to pull that dog off.
Okay, but, I mean, how many of your officers, let me put, or deputies?
Our K-9 training?
Yeah.
Two.
Just two.
Our three, actually, if you count Sergeant Marson.
Okay.
But we only have one of them.
Right, I understand, but, okay. I'll make a motion to sign the K-9 maintenance training agreement with Boone County.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we can go back if you want to the 50-50 discussion.
I still don't understand it. I just, I said my piece earlier. It's a United Way event, so... I don't, unless you want to discuss it more. I'd still be having it if it were me, so...
Well, I like, it would bring us a lot of money, but if there's a question of us...
It's not us, it's United Way is getting that money.
Then I would, I would err on the side of caution and just not do it, but...
I'm just saying, I wouldn't. I just don't know why, why it would be a problem, so... And I don't have a problem putting something out there for people that are going to contribute to the United Way into a drawing for the, the day off and half-day off, but I think that should be something we all decide.
Yeah, I apologize, so...
That was my issue with that. So... I don't think they have anything else.
Okay.
Got anything else?
Oh, I did get a letter from Department of Agriculture on their land survey program, and we can participate in that. It's a cooperative effort between the county commissions, county surveyors, and Department of Agriculture. We'll pay $350 towards each corner along with all the monumental supplies. I don't know if that's, if that's something we even do, but since I received it in the mail...
It's public works, then?
Yeah. Yes, please. I just opened it today, so, okay. And our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, July 19th at 9:00 AM. Motion to stand in recess.
Motion to stand in recess until 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.